Should there be any significant modifications to the bargaining expectation or to the contract expectations for teachers that we may need to open bargaining to discuss those? Since receiving the letter, I have had conversations with Mr. Spinelli, and at this point, we don't see anything in the plan that would necessitate opening up any bargaining at this point. But that is informing us that should the plan make any significant changes in the current collective bargaining agreements, that that may be something that we need to do moving forward. Any questions on that? Okay. So what I'd like to do is review the reopening plan. And just to give you the context behind this, I think as most of you know, the Governor and Commissioner of Education has, is requiring each district to develop three plans that will allow for three different types of school openings come this fall. We're required to develop a plan that would allow every student to return to school five days a week. And that's essentially what I'm going to be spending most of my time discussing this evening, is what that full return plan would look like upon when students return to school in September. We're also obligated to develop a hybrid plan, which would go into effect should the COVID numbers spike and the Department of Health and the state decide that it's no longer safe to have all students attending school. We would be asked to reduce the number of students in the building by 50%. So the hybrid plan, as you'll see, allows us to continue schooling, but reduces the number of students in the building to half of what we would typically have. And then the third plan is a return to distance learning that we experienced this past spring. So we started the process once the state threw out the requirement to do so. So we've had about three weeks to begin the process of planning to final, final plans, which are due to the state this Friday. So we're obligated to get our finalized draft plan. And I'm going to call it a draft plan because one of the, one of the items that the state has been highlighting is that the one thing in common that all of these plans must have is flexibility. We need to be flexible based upon local conditions, state conditions, regional conditions. And as you, as I review the plan with you, I think you'll see that there are probably going to be some local challenges that may make our plan different than Hebron-Marlboro and Andover Elementary Schools' plan. So just because we're in the same region, we may be struggling with some items that they, you know, other schools may not. So kind of, I think we're, you almost have to view this as a plan that's eternally in draft mode because we're constantly updating it based upon conditions in the situation. I'm going to share my screen with you. And the plan that I'm going to review with you is the reopening executive summary. So I've shared with the board the full plan, which is 40-plus pages. I'm not going to be reviewing this this evening. I think we'd probably be here through breakfast if that was the case. But the executive session includes the key highlights and I think the most important components of the plan. So, and I'm going to ask you to stop me with any questions that you might have as we go through, because it is pretty dense and there's a lot here. So if you waited until I finished, you may, you know, you may forget what you might have wanted to ask. So to start the process, we did put together an advisory committee. And as you can see, the advisory committee includes representatives from the district, administrators, teachers, non-certified personnel. We have parents in the committee. We have a student on the committee. Kathleen Goodwin is our Board of Ed representative. We have a representative from Witsen's. So our goal was to make sure that we had, I'm just going to go back. I think somebody might need to be admitted to the meeting. We wanted to be as inclusive as possible in developing the plan. One of the pieces that we started with is we needed to get a sense of what the community's perspective on returning to school might look like. So we've done a number of things. We surveyed our families early on. And two of the key questions we asked were, "At this time, do you intend to send your child to school?" And right when we completed the survey, 75.4% of parents indicated that they felt comfortable sending their students to school. So right now, we have an anticipation that approximately 25% of students will not be returning to physical schooling in the fall. The other piece that we really needed to get a handle with is what percentage of families plan on driving their students to school, avoiding the bus? 58.2% of parents indicated that they would be driving their students to school. We also surveyed the staff because under normal circumstances, there are certain medical conditions that would allow a staff member to remain out of the building. Now that we're in a pandemic, there are additional benefits that allow a staff member to remain out if they are in a high-risk health category, if they care for somebody who's in a high-risk category, if they have challenges with childcare due to COVID. So we surveyed the staff to see what percentage might be impacted by this. And 38.7% of our staff, that includes both teachers and non-certified staff, indicated that they hit one of the high-risk categories. It does not necessarily mean that they're not planning on returning to school. They're informing us that they possibly are in one of those categories though. And I'll talk a little more, bit more about that in a few minutes of the numbers that we act, the hard numbers that we do have right now. As we developed the plan, we met with the advisory committee twice a week. We certainly met as an administrative staff. Our, our school principals and assistant principals met with their colleagues in the region and in other parts of the state. I met with different superintendent groups each week. Met with the Chatham Health Department each week. So we were able to pull in quite a bit of information. At the beginning of this process, the commissioner held a couple of weekly meetings. So that was helpful at the beginning to get some additional information. We then, every week, shared the progress that we were making in the drafts with our staff and with our families. And that's been very helpful. Some parents in particular have been very helpful in asking for clarification. We've been able to get kind of a secondary mailing out to clarify some things that might have been clear to folks. The middle school and high school both hosted faculty meetings, our staff meetings yesterday. So we've, we've done our best to make sure that we're communicating the draft plans as they move forward and receiving feedback from folks in terms of things that they think are important.
Scott, do you mind if I interrupt? I did have a quick question. It's Jessica, how many people did not respond back to the survey?
So, well, so for parents, we had about 820 responses. So out of 1,400 people, we had a little more than half. And for teachers, we have, for staff members, we had a little less than 200 responding. And we probably have about 350.
Scott, Scott, this is Judy. Can you speak closer to your speaker, please?
Oh, sure. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. And Judy, feel free to interrupt if you're having any.
No, it's, it's been very good. It's been very informative. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So the, the state provided us with a plan, adapt, advance, achieve plan, that provided us with guidelines for the development of the plan. And if you've heard anything in the news, you might have heard something about the state guidelines and some of the challenges that this has been providing with districts in that there's very, there's very little that's actually mandated. There are a few things that are mandated. Much of it, though, is really left up to the districts. Hence the fact that a lot of us have been collaborating with other districts and our local health departments to make sure that we're not missing something and that our plans are at least consistent with other staff. These are the six guidelines that come from the state plan. So, you know, they're looking at safeguarding the health and safety of students and staff. They want to make sure that all students have the opportunity to return to school full-time beginning in the fall. You may have heard in the news that some plans have been featured in the news. And some of those plans indicate that students would not be returning full-time, that they'd only be there for a couple of days. We received a letter from the commissioner today, essentially letting those districts know that that was unacceptable, that to adhere to the law, all districts needed to plan for the full return of all students five days a week. We, they, you know, the plan calls for the monitoring of our students, our staff. It emphasizes equity and access and the support provided to all students, regardless of whether they're in the building or, or out in the building. The plan depends upon strong two-way communication with partners, such as our families and our staff. And then factoring into decisions regarding reopening and the challenges of physical safety, and in particular, social, emotional well-being and the mental health needs of our students who have not been in school. So these are the, the six guiding principles that kind of set the plan off. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk you through some of the key elements of what will be different upon returning to school. Some of these are physical changes to the school. Some of them are behavioral changes.
It's not a picture. It's not the picture. I can't view.
To start off, one of the, one of the pieces that we needed to look at was our air filtration system. The CDC has some very specific guidance on the types of filters that are appropriate to filter out COVID particles. And so one of the pieces we're looking at is upgrading our air filtration system. Not the whole system, but the filters that we're using. And I'll talk to those in specific when we talk about the costs associated with this. Our water fountains throughout the building have been turned off. As you can imagine, water fountains would be an awful thing to have running in your building when you're trying to return during a pandemic. However, we do have touchless bottle filter fillers that we have available throughout the school. And again, I think I might need to let somebody in, so I'm gonna just check. Yeah. Okay. Um, we have, we have a number of touchless bottle filters in the buildings. And just so you understand what these are, these are dual water fountains with a bottle, a touchless bottle filler that you just put the bottle up to. You don't have to touch it. It just put it up to it and it, and it fills the bottle. So we've turned off the, the water fountains. We are scheduled to add one more to each of the two buildings. So the middle school will get an additional one. The high school will get an additional one. And you'll see when we start talking money and numbers that, if possible, we'd like to add additional ones to the school. Providing hand sanitizer and cleaning wipes to each classroom. One of the challenges we have with our, well, I shouldn't say one of the challenges. We have a lot of challenges with our eight-period day and trying to maintain physical distance between students. And one of the challenges is the fact that we have eight periods each day. So in order to reduce transitions, the fact that students are getting up from one classroom and going to another, we have adopted a block schedule. The block schedule, and I'll go, I'll go through this in detail in a few minutes, will reduce the number of times that a student has to get up from one classroom and move to another. The other challenge we have with our block schedule is scheduling lunches because each student in our current eight-period day has a dedicated 45-minute lunch. And we really had some struggles trying to physically separate 350 to 400 students during a lunch wave to make sure that they could eat, but not be in close proximity to each other. So when I review the block schedule in detail in a few minutes, I'll explain how we're doing that. We're modifying our hallway traffic patterns so that some of our hallways will become one-way, some of our stairways will become one-way. When we have traffic moving both ways, we'll be putting lines down in the middle of the corridors. So we will be trying to reduce as much as possible students passing each other in high-traffic areas. We're going to physically distance students to the maximize extent possible. The state plan, I mentioned to you, it has some mandated things and it has some suggested things. One of the mandates is that all students and staff members wear masks. Because this plan requires masks, the state is allowing us to physically distance to the extent feasible as opposed to giving us a hard and fast six-foot maximum or minimized distance. So we are going through all the classrooms. We're setting up desks so that they are as far apart from each other as they possibly can be. All of the desks are facing the front of the room. So we're, we're doing what we can in that area. But that's a challenge for us to actually keep the desks six feet apart. So we are maximizing that distance though as much as possible. One of the components of the state plan is to cohort students as much as possible. And what that means is that you try to keep a small group of students together as much as possible through the day so that you don't have a lot of mixing of different students coming in contact with one another. The middle school can do that to an extent with their teams. And so each team will travel together throughout the day. There will be some mixing for specials. The high school, it's, it's just not feasible to do that when you have such a wide diversity of classes. To find any one group of students that might actually travel between classes together is, is not only unlikely, it's, it's really impossible. As I said, early masks are required for all staff and students under the Department of Ed guidelines. We will be providing face shields and some plexiglass dividers for teachers to allow them. There are some opportunities when they may be able to teach without a mask and the plexiglass shield and dividers would assist in that. It would also assist just to, I think, provide some comfort as teachers are talking in the class.
Excuse me, Stephanie? Stephanie?
Yes, go ahead, Judy.
This is Judy. I have, I will try to get back on. I have a work emergency that I need to get off for. I will try to get back on.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
Just letting you know. Thank you.
The community activities after hours will be restricted. One of the components is that we're going to try to keep the school essentially populated with our students as opposed to bringing others in. So this does mean that we wouldn't be hosting evening activities from outside of school. And we've, we've talked to, I know I've talked to Rich Clark already, and I know Hebron is, I think, planning on reducing significantly the number of activities that they're planning anyway. But we will be, our goal will be to provide the custodians with the opportunity to do as thorough cleaning as possible. And the only way we can do that is by making sure that the building is available for their custodians after school hours. That would also include rental of the auditorium and those types of activities. And as I say here, that will increase the cleaning procedures. We will be bringing some of our evening custodians on during the day. That'll allow them to clean each bathroom at least twice a day. That will allow them to hit those, those touch surfaces throughout the school. And then when the students are gone, they can do a thorough cleaning of each of the classrooms. Okay, I'm going to stop there and just ask if there are any questions on some of those physical changes that we were making.
Scott, this is Vin. I have a question on the, on the cleaning. I know we're looking at the aeration type of disinfectant. Is that, is that going to be happening after school hours or?
Correct, yeah. Anything like that would happen after school hours. The, the plan for during school hours, you know, as you can imagine, it's, it's really impossible to have custodians go into a classroom, you know, after and between each class. So the, the plan will be, we'll be using alcohol wipes and we'll have enough in each classroom so that students will wipe down their desks and their work surfaces at the end of class. As a new student comes in, they will do likewise so that the areas where the students are sitting will be, will have been cleaned twice before a student sits down at that desk. But any type of the nebulizers, that would be done after hours. In terms of monitoring for illness, where the state plan does not require us to do any temperature checks, anything along those lines. It doesn't require any specific testing. We are asking that students and staff self-monitor. And this will obviously be, be asked of parents as well to help, help us in monitoring their own child's health. If they are experiencing any symptoms, we'll be asking them to stay home and report those symptoms to the school nurse. Any student exhibiting any COVID symptoms will be isolated. We'll, we're developing an isolation room away from all the classrooms. We're looking at the dressing rooms behind the auditorium. The dressing rooms are large enough to have beds which can be isolated from each other. And they have a dedicated bathroom in each of the two dressing rooms. So we're looking at those as isolation rooms. Students would be isolated there until a parent or an adult could come pick them up or in case of a staff member, until they could get a ride home. One of the things we'll be talking about is adding a licensed practical nurse. And I'll talk a little bit about what that funding might look like. But that, a licensed practical nurse would allow us to have a medical, medical personnel overseeing the isolation room to ensure student safety. In the event of a confirmed COVID case, we would notify Chatham Health and follow their recommendations. They would, if we, we do have a confirmed case, there are set steps which Chatham Health will take us through. We would be closing for a couple of days. They would do contact tracing. And of course, we would notify our community as well if that was the case.
Hey, Scott, this is, actually, sorry to interrupt you. But on that, on the school-community definition, is, is that physically attending and, you know, staff, students, anyone at the school? Or is that a student has a parent? Can you define the community? Because it probably makes a big difference.
Absolutely. And this is quite frankly, I just got off a video chat with the Chatham Health District just a few minutes before we started this meeting. And this, you know, quite frankly, Scott, this is still undefined. This is one of the areas that the Department of Health needs to provide specific guidance to each school. So your, your question is a good one. What happens when one of our students has a family member who may have, may find out that they were exposed to an individual with COVID? Does that mean that that student has to quarantine along with the adult who came in direct contact with somebody? If a student has a parent that has COVID, you know, what, what are we, even though the student themselves may not have symptoms, what are our obligations there? So I don't have a specific answer for that yet, but that is something that the Department of Health knows they need to provide us with guidance on. In terms of closing procedures, in the event of a confirmed case, we would likely close the school at least temporarily so that the students and staff who might have been exposed could be quarantined. And Chatham Health would follow up at that point. And it doesn't mean that we close for two, two to five days and we're back open as if nothing happened. Chatham Health and the state would collaborate and determine whether Ram or any of the other schools in the district would return to being fully opened or whether we would go to a hybrid model or to the, the distance learning at that point. And again, we are waiting for, for the recommendations from the Department of Health to flesh out what that process will look like. If we did open up with a hybrid learning model, I'll be talking about this in more detail in a few minutes. I just want to also share that we are working in close collaboration with Andover, Hebron, and Marlboro Elementary School districts so that if we go to a hybrid learning model, our goal will be to coordinate with the elementary districts so that we don't have four different schedules and a lot of headaches for parents in the four towns. So our goal is to work collaboratively with the other three districts.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
About the two-to-five-day closure, would you go to distance learning at that point? Or would they be considered kind of a snow day situation and added on to the end of the year?
You know, we would probably go to distance learning at that point, Stephanie, because there's no guarantee that would be, we'd be coming back. So, you know, I think that we're going to want to take advantage of whatever time we can. So we would likely, we would likely begin the process of distance learning just in case that we found that, you know, we weren't returning. So as opposed to losing that time.
Can I ask?
On, on the question of distance learning, the, one of the state mandates is that, you know, parents and families do have the option of keeping their child home should they choose to. We are still obligated to instruct them. So as you'll see, one of the challenges is how do we maximize instruction and learning for both those students who are in the building and those students who may choose to remain home? Also, a student that remains home may decide at any time to come back to school. So it's likely that we will have students who decide to remain home and then we might have some after a couple of days decide to come back into school. We might have some after a week decide to come back to school. So we will need to make sure that we are flexible in making sure that we're providing each of these students with, making sure that their learning needs are met as well. And then obviously, if we are fully or partially closed, we would go to the distance learning model. Another obligation for us is to make sure that we're training staff and students. You may have seen in the news that one of the modifications that the State Department of Ed, the actual, the State Board of Ed has already made is that they've reduced the required days from 180 to 177 with a specific purpose of making sure that we take advantage of those additional days for professional development at the beginning of the year and providing orientation and training to our students. So we will make sure that we have a training process in place for our staff and for our students. The modification that we'll be proposing for our schedule, for our calendar, I should say, is we currently have, we start on August 31st with three professional days. And then we start school on Thursday. And then we start school on Thursday. Rather than starting school though on Thursday, September 3rd, we're adding two professional development days and pushing the beginning of school off until the Tuesday after Labor Day. What this, what, what this allows us to do is it allows us to add additional professional development at the beginning of the year so that teachers can do a number of things. Be trained on how do we manage the movement of students through the building? How do we manage ensuring that students are wearing masks at all time? How do we manage the fact that we're working with a new schedule? So there's a lot of logistics that teachers will need to be trained in. And then, just as important, what are the impacts on instructional practices? And so teachers will need some additional time to plan for working under a new schedule, plan on a, a new year in which some of their students will be in class, some of the students will be out of class. To facilitate the return of students on September 8th, that Tuesday after Labor Day, we'll be bringing back just the 7th and 9th graders. These are the two classes that are new to their respective schools. This will allow us to provide orientation for the incoming 7th graders and the incoming 9th graders and run them through their schedule and, and hopefully give them an opportunity to feel what it's like going from class to class in a different type of way than they might normally have expected. And then on Wednesday, the 9th, we would, the 7th and 9th graders would remain at home and we'd bring in the 8th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students who already have been in the buildings, but this is gonna be a new environment for them. So it'll give us a chance to orient them to their new surroundings. What this does with those changes, this puts every student at 177 days. So we, we meet the state requirement. This would allow us to keep the last day of school unchanged at June 16th. The first four days of, of school would be early release days. As you can imagine, as, as the elementary schools start to modify their own schedules, as we begin to modify our own schedules, if we're not talking and making sure that we're in sync as far as bus runs go, we're gonna have some significant challenges. So in order to facilitate the elementaries from going with their early release days, that first four days, we're going to go with early release days too. And I think they're thinking that having early release days for the first four days of school will help students acclimate to wearing masks and being in a, a different school environment than they might be used to. Okay, questions at this point? So as I indicated, we're looking at three models: full attendance, a hybrid model, and a distance learning model. We will be told by the state which model we'll be returning to school with. Some of you may have heard that Governor Lamont announced the other day that in a month or so, the state will indicate which learning model we'll be coming back to based upon the current data, the COVID data at, at that time. So depending on the spread of the virus, we'll determine whether we're all in school, some of us are in school, or we're doing schooling from home. What are each of those gonna look like? So let's look at that in, in some detail. So if we are back full time, we are proposing in a, as I said, a block schedule. What this does is it reduces the amount of travel time on any given day that any student has to do from one class to another. So rather than having eight periods in a day, they're gonna have three or four periods in a day plus lunch. So if you look at the schedule, you're probably asking yourself, do we not know how to count? Or is there, is there another reason why we're not simply going 1, 2, 3, 4 on day one or day A and 5, 6, 7, 8 on, on B day? As I said earlier, the challenge, one of the challenges that we have, and this is a significant challenge for us, is providing lunch for all of our students. So we are obligated to provide lunch. There, we have a number of our students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. We wanna make sure that they have an opportunity to get their lunch every day. And, and obviously, we wanna make sure that every student has a chance to, to eat during the day. Built into our schedule is a full 45-minute lunch period. So we at first were working with our regular A-period day, asking the question, how would we provide lunch to 350 to 400 kids and keep them socially distanced in an environment where they're not going to be wearing masks? And quite frankly, we found it an impossibility. We do have some assistance that will help us out. For example, the Lions have been very gracious and will be lending us their picnic tables from the Lions Fairground. They have over 100 picnic tables. They've got almost 100 benches. That will allow us to provide outside resources for students to say eat lunch or have classes outside. The challenge we have there obviously is if it rains or if we have a spate of bad weather, that plan kind of falls apart if we're relying on that to distance kids for lunch. The other options, we're trying to rent enough tables or purchase enough tables to serve lunch in the gym. And as you can imagine, that has all sorts of challenges attached with as well. So the guidance from the state is they're asking us to make, to provide students with the opportunity to eat lunch in classrooms and in as small numbers as possible. So if you look at the, the schedule, you'll see that each day there's a luncheon advisory. Each of our students has an advisory with anywhere from 10 to 12 students. So they're small, small groups. This would allow each of our students to have lunch in a smaller area or a small, with a smaller group of students, making it less risky to be in an environment where they'll have their masks off. The reason why the periods are not going sequentially is we wanted to make sure that in an effort to possibly reduce the number of students in the building at one time, we are going to allow any student who does not have, say, a class at the beginning of the day to arrive late if, if possible. If they can't arrive late, that's not, not an issue. We'll provide obviously a space for them to be. And conversely, if they have a class or a period at the end of the day where they don't have a class, they'll be able to leave early as well. So we put the lunch periods, periods 5, 6, and 7, either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day in hopes that that would allow at least some of those 350 to 400 students who are assigned to a lunch that period to arrive late or leave early. Another challenge we had with taking a single eight-period day and moving to a block schedule is the fact that teachers are required to have a preparation period each day. They're required to have a duty-free lunch each day. And as the, kind of the, 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 the fact that we're cutting the, the day in half, there will be teachers that don't have a prep period, say, on an A day. They may not have a lunch on an A day and likewise on B day. So what we're doing with this schedule is we're releasing students early. Students will be dismissed at 12:55. This will provide teachers with a preparation lunch period at the end of the day so that we're adhering to the, the teacher contracts. It also provides, you know, we would provide an opportunity for our custodians to have better access to the facility so they could begin cleaning and make sure that they do a deep cleaning every evening. So full attendance with a block schedule, this would be the same at the middle school. It, it increases the instructional times from about 45 minutes to 70 minutes. And it, again, reduces transitions through the hallways. It allows us to provide lunch in small, smaller groups. And it ensures that we can provide each of our teachers with the preparation period and lunch that they're obligated to each day. Now, if the state decides that the COVID numbers are increasing and we need to look at a model in which only half the students are in the building at any one time, this would also mean that only half of the students would be on the bus at any one time. We're proposing a hybrid model in which students, half our students are in school. On, in this model here, we would run the A-block day on Monday and Tuesday. If your last name is A through J, you would attend Monday. If it's K through Z, you would, you would attend Tuesday. Wednesday would be a distance learning day. It would allow the custodians to clean the building. And then we would follow suit with a B day on Thursday and Friday. We're still in discussion with the elementary schools on this one. One of the suggestions from one of the elementary schools is that we run an A day on Monday and a B day on Tuesday. Still have the distance learning on Wednesday and then an A and a B day again on Thursday and Friday. So we're still working with the elementary school to finalize that, but it will still have the same impact of reducing the number of students in the building by half. The reason why we chose A through J is that is about half of our students. We went through our class lists and, and that would populate most of our classes with about half of the students that would be here on a normal day. So that's the, and, and we would go even further than that because we know, for example, that some of our students, parents rely on some of our students to provide childcare for their siblings. So we wanted, that's one of the reasons why I wanna make sure that our schedule is identical to the elementary schedules. We may have some siblings that have different last names. So for example, your brother, you may, your last name may begin with an A, but your brother or sister may begin with a K. And we will take that into account so as much as possible. Well, and we will make sure that siblings with different names are put on the same day. So there will be some hand scheduling here to make sure that whereas we disrupt our families at, at, as little as possible as we move through there. If the state determines that we're out and not returning to school, we would go into our distance learning model. I will confess that one of the challenges that we've had adhering to the state's guidelines of developing three plans in a, in essentially a two to three weeks is it's focused most of our time on logistics and building issues and procedures and moving kids to the building. It hasn't given us a whole lot of time to actually get down and talk about the instructional piece and what does that look like? So each of the, the middle school and the high school have both, are putting together committees of teachers to look at what will it look like, or teams of teachers, I should say, what will it look like for a teacher to have students who are some in the building and some at home? If we're back full time, we'll also be looking at what modifications to our distance learning model might we wanna make based upon the lessons learned from this past spring? Okay, any questions on, I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you. Questions are all on the different models? Okay. So-
Hang on Scott, I'll ask a quick one.
Sure.
So with the A model and the B model, the teachers will still be required to attend both days, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because half, you know, half of your kids will be there on the A day and the other half will be on B day. Yeah.
Yep, that's what I thought. Just wanted to double check.
Yep. So for transportation, you know, here again, I, I, you know, I, I mentioned the eight-period day. I, I think our eight-period day does a remarkable job of providing a lot of, a lot of things that, that a traditional day doesn't provide. You know, we provide students with a break in their day with a 45-minute lunch. We provide teachers with collaborative time. But when you try to take that eight-period day and work it into a pandemic, it creates some problems for you. So here we are, opening up our new traffic patterns in the spring, in the fall with a whole new set of challenges presented to us. So we do anticipate that we will have a significant increase in parent drop-off in the morning. So the traffic project could not have come at a better time. And just to, just briefly review that, you know, we will have, coming off of, of Wall Street, we will have an entrance dedicated for teachers. There'll be an exit that will only be for the buses that have come in off of Ram Road. We'll have an entrance and exit only for parents as they drop off. And then we'll have the entrance over by the tennis courts, which will be primarily for students. There will be some travel for parents who are dropping off at the middle school, but we will reduce significantly the mixing of traffic from our students and our parents and our buses. So that's a fantastic thing. And I think the new parent drop-off provides a, a much larger area for parents to line up in. So we're hopeful that that'll reduce any traffic out on, on Wall Street. We know that we will need some additional staff though for traffic control before and after school. If, at least when we start up to make sure that, that everything is flowing well. Students riding the bus will be required to wear masks at all times. We will be asking students and training students that when they enter the bus, they should simply move to the back. And so there's, you know, minimize students taking a, a seat in the middle of the bus and having other students pass by them. We'll unload students from the front of, the front of the bus. It will take a little bit more time to get students off the bus. And then we did explore having a specific middle school drop-off and having then the traditional high school drop-off. We did have the bus company bring one of their buses and try to run it through and it's just, just really no safe way of doing that. So we will be having the middle and high school students dropped off in, where they traditionally have been dropped off. We will though have an entrance that is unique and designated for our middle school students and entrances that are dedicated to our high school students so that we can separate those populations as much as possible. And, you know, right now, the middle school students kind of travel through the atrium to get to their hallway and this way would, would avoid that mixture with the high school students. Face masks, I don't have to tell you that face masks are a divisive issue wherever you go. But this is really, if, if there's one thing that this plan requires, it is that every student and staff must wear a face mask. There are some exceptions, the only exceptions being if a student has medical documentation stating that their health condition would be unsafe for them to wear a, a face covering or if they are having trouble breathing unconscious incapacitated. So there really are very few, very few exceptions to the rule for anyone needing to wear a face mask. The state talks a lot about mask breaks. You know, as I said, we are, we are set, we are borrowing the picnic tables and the benches from the Lions. We're gonna try to provide classrooms with the opportunity to take their kids outside as much as possible where students can socially distance and remove their masks. And that'll be one of the things we'll be discussing with our staff over the, the rest of the summer is what does a mask break look like and is it even possible to do inside the school building? Obviously, during lunch would be a, a time when that would happen. So face masks are non-negotiable as, as we're moving forward. As I indicated, lunch will be served in advisory, allowing us to reduce the number of students in the classroom at any one time without masks. We're working with Witsen's, our new lunch provider, to develop a plan for the distribution of purchased lunches. Obviously, we can't have everybody go to the cafeteria and purchase lunch the way they would normally do. The, the, the crowding would defeat any, any, any chances to try to keep people physically distant. Students certainly may bring their lunches to school. We will be converting both of the schools to nut-free environments since we have, we'll have every kid eating in a classroom. And so there's no guarantee that if I bring a peanut butter sandwich to, to class that the student that sits there after following me may have a, a nut allergy. So that will be an important piece for moving forward. One of the items that we really are, are working on and we don't have a finalized plan for- Um, one of the items that we really are, are working on and we don't have a finalized plan for this is the distribution and eating of breakfast items. That may be something that Witson sets up outside kiosks and we may ask students eating that typically breakfast at school to do so outside. So that'll, that'll be one of our continued works in progress. And um, still in progress. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this, the timing of being assigned the development three plans and coming to this Friday really provided us with the time necessary to create the plans. But most importantly, it really hasn't provided us with the time to um, define what is this going to look like? So we have teachers that'll be working um, over the rest of the summer to figure out how best to deliver instruction to both students inside the classroom and those remaining at home. What will teaching and learning look like in a hybrid model? Um, and then what specific right, well, and then um, also the distance model, looking at tweaking that. But then what are the specific criteria for moving from full attendance to the hybrid or distance models? We're still waiting for the Department of Health to clarify that. We're also still waiting for the Department of Health to define um, what should our procedures be if a child or a staff member exhibits COVID symptoms versus someone who actually is tested positive with COVID. Another challenge that is um, probably the one thing that's keeping superintendents and principals up at night across the state is we all know that we'll have, um, we have, as I, as you saw from our survey data, we have almost 40% of our teachers who and staff members who may fall into a high risk category. Um, we have to ask ourselves, what are we going to do if we can't, um, if we don't have enough teachers who are able to be physically in the building to instruct their classes? So we're looking at what does it mean to have some of our staff teaching from home? Who's going to be monitoring their classrooms um, back in school? Um, what happens when a teacher exhibits symptoms and is required to be um, quarantined? How are we going to work with that? So that, that is probably right now, I think, the scariest part of the plan for me. And so we are working diligently to see what that might look like. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. The next thing we'll do is we'll look at the finances of what all this might look like, but be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Vin.
Thanks Scott. That's uh, that's a lot of uh, info. I appreciate the work that the uh, that the committee has done. Um, can you just talk a little bit more about, and I know it's still in progress, but um, the discussion about if, if the, you know, when you had the online classes, the teacher was online with the students in their class, right? Um, if, if you're going to have, let's say 25% of the kids not come or not attend in, in any one class. Um, the teacher is still going to instruct in a classroom. What is the online learning piece going to look like?
That's, that's a great question. Um, and that's quite frankly, Vin, that's what we're looking at. You know, we were, we were hopeful from the get-go that the state was going to provide us with additional guidance on that piece. And actually the state did come out with a learning hub, which is a resource for learning items. Um, I don't know if any of the teachers on board have taken a look at the learning hub, but it's um, uninspiring to say the least. It's, it's, it's not something that's going to be of great assistance to us. Um, so you know, one of the, 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 the kind of thought process as we're moving forward with is, is do we need to ask our teachers to kind of move forward and teach, even though you have students in your classroom as if you were teaching online? Doesn't mean you ignore your students and you tell them, open up your computers and don't talk to them, but you know, how do we engage the students that may be checking in? So it could very well be that you, well, first of all, Vin, keep in mind that, you know, Ram, I think most of our students are, are, are used to being in classrooms where there's a lot of collaboration. You know, you're, you're sitting with groups of your friends and, and you're solving problems together. And the teacher's not presenting to you as much as presenting a problem to you, and then you're working within your group to solve that problem. We're going to have to ask, how do we, how do we continue to do that in an environment where everybody is sitting in a row facing forward in the, you know, 1950s style of setting up a classroom? Um, so, you know, students can turn and talk to each other, but you're not going to necessarily be able to have students physically doing it. So I anticipate that students will still be doing quite a bit of work on their Chromebooks to facilitate that interaction with each other. That will allow some of our students who are not in the classroom to join in as if they were in the classroom. Um, quite frankly, that is, that is one of the biggest challenges that we have in, you know, I can't run two schools. We don't have the staff and it's unfair to ask our teachers to say, you know, teach the kids in your class and then when they go home, turn around and, and teach the kids who are home. Um, so we really are going to need to use all our creativity to find a, a way of, of addressing both those students at the same time. What's it going to look like? I think it's going to look like a mixture of what students experience in the spring and what they're used to um, when they're in the classroom.
Thanks. That's all for me.
Scott, did you have a question?
Scott, this is Scott with a question. Yep, it's uh, coming right af, uh, right, right behind what, what Vin was poking at there. I've literally been thinking about this for months and I'm just curious in the discussions that you've had with the staff moving up to this, to this point. And I, and I heard you just say, which all of us know, it, it is physically and financially and probably other ways impossible to run two separate schools. And, and you're looking at a hybrid of, of, of distance learning and, and what the uh, and traditional learning that the students are used to with that collaboration. I, I know that we had a good bit of funds in, in the budget previously and, and we still have a little bit of time. But in, in discussions I've had with folks from everybody from universities to what my company does at work and everything else, the best solution is that hybrid where the teacher teaches, he or she teaches. Ideally, if the student is able to with whatever is going on in the home environment, they're there live, meaning they're on their computer. Uh, and, and they do, we're, we've actually gotten pretty good at it over the weeks at participating, meaning if the students at home, that, you know, they raise their hand digitally, you could have a student keeping an eye on a Chromebook and reading that to the teacher. Might even be fun. Um, it, it's, it's not traditional collaboration, but you can do it and, and we're actually doing it right now. And uh, and then the other piece is, is it possible, I mean, this is more of a question for Mr. Butson and we don't have to deep dive it here, but let's say that student can't attend in class because they're watching their younger brother or sister. Can they watch the recording later on? Uh, so I, I just wondered if, if, I'm sure it's not super creative and you guys did kick that around, but that, that seems like the best case scenario that I've heard so far.
Right. And we, we've actually, um, you know, part of the, the purchased items that we're looking to do as we move into the fall would be some software packages that will allow us to do some of that. So where Schoology is a, some of you may be familiar with Google Classroom. You might've seen your own kids or the, their teachers' Google Classrooms. Schoology is a um, a, a much more refined, a, a, a more robust version of Google Classroom. So that will provide teachers to do um, more in that type of environment, Scott, that you just described. Um, we're also looking at Screencastify, which is a program that will allow teachers to share their screens more um, easily with their students, whether they're in the classroom or whether they're at home. So I, I agree. It's going to be a um, hype, some type of hybridization. Um, you just can't, we just can't do business as usual, unfortunately, when you've got so many students in different places.
Thank you.
So if, if I could, um, can we talk money? So I'm going to share my screen again.
Stephanie and Scott, can I just say something before you? Um, first of all, I, I'm part of the committee and I just want to um, let you know what a privilege it is to be part of that committee. And I know that you guys are not just working during the school hours to get this done. And I, I considered a Herculean effort. Um, based on the vagaries of the plan that the state had given each school and district and the lack of funding. And I think it's important that um, we as board members understand that Ram will um, not get a lot of money and will not um, the, the state is not offering to necessarily support every school district's plans. And the logistics, like Scott said, are really where the, the money comes in and trying to provide safety in an environment where we're usually asking kids to be together, to learn to empathize with each other, to learn to play fair and be kind. Um, and now we're asking them to be separate. Um, it's, it's a good job for our educators at Ram. And um, I just want to let you guys know that before Scott stops to talk money.
Thank you Kathleen. Well, and Kathleen, I really appreciate your comments, you know, because back when, when the pandemic first started and we were out and, and doing our distance learning. Um, some, and I, I don't remember where I read the article, but, but somebody I thought had such a unique perspective. And they were suggesting that if schools ever had to open up again and actually put students in the building while the pandemic was still occurring, we would be forced to do everything that we promise our students will never do. So for example, and, and I think they were really referring more to younger students, but you know, you want to make school a comfortable place. Well, bringing students back under this scenario presents school as kind of a scary place. We're asking you to wear masks. We're asking you to stay away from other people. Um, and you know, we're going to have to be very mindful of that for some of our students because for some of our students, they may internalize this, you know, we, we're looking at it as this is what we need to do to keep you safe and to continue in-person learning. Kids may be internalizing it very differently. They may be internalizing it, everybody out there is scary. School's an even scarier place than I thought it was. And on top of that, I've got to wear a mask and I can't, you know, have lunch with my friends and I can't hold hands with my best friends. And it's a complex stew that we're walking into. So Kathleen, I, I appreciate those comments. Um, so I'm going to share my screen again and we will look at um, some money. So we were required to um, to send a, to fill, to fill out a um, survey and provide it to the state. Can everyone see that? Up, here it comes. Okay, can everyone see the spreadsheet? So we were obligated to submit to the state on Friday, a survey and Eva did a beautiful job of collecting all of our information, putting it into a very coherent format. Um, we surveyed our teachers, we surveyed other schools, we surveyed our Department of Health, we surveyed the state. We talked to our parents, you know, we really tried to figure out what is it that a school needs in order to um, reopen under our current conditions. So um, we submitted to the state a document that indicated that in order to reopen and fund the plan that I just reviewed with you to maintain that plan for a full school year. And I have to stress, this, this money assumes a full school year. It would cost approximately $1,070,000. And that's $1,070,000 that we didn't budget for. So the reason why we had to submit that survey on Friday a week before the full plan gets shared with the state is that Governor Lamont um, has approximately $99 million in cares funding from the federal government. And he's noticed us that they will do their best to support the financial needs that we have shared with the state. The caveat there though, is that the state does have some prioritization on this. So their priorities are connectivity and making sure that students have access to the internet and to digital media and social and emotional learning. So attending to the emotional needs of their students. And I'm sorry to say that there's very little requests in our plan to address those areas because I think we, we, connectivity is not a significant problem for us. Um, and we have programs already that address social emotional learning. So um, whether that means that we are not going to be getting much money at all, which I suspect it does mean that. Um, unfortunately, I, I, I'd like to say that the state will come through, but I, I, I don't want to give any false promises. So what we have created is a list of what we think we would need to make this work. So um, we have, and Eva's done a beautiful job of identifying some existing operating money, some additional, some existing capital, some existing grant money that we can cover some of this funding with. Um, but I, we're still going to be walking away this evening with a lot of this remaining unfunded. Um, and I think I stand with most superintendents at this point in being very hesitant to go out and try to convince you to purchase everything on this list because we may find out tomorrow, you know, we may purchase all this and then find out tomorrow that we won't be going back or we'll be going into a distance learning thing. So um, and I think usually you'll see most of the, the costs are in personnel anyway. So um, it's probably a, a little too early to, to move fully in that area. So let's talk a little bit about what we're looking at here. Um, it's, as far as personnel goes, an LPN, right now we have a school nurse, a full-time nurse at the high school. We have a full-time nurse at the middle school. The middle school nurse has a secretary who is not fully dedicated to the school nurse. The secretary also oversees middle school attendance. And at the high school, we have a part-time secretary. Our nurses have been complaining, quite frankly, for quite a while that the support staff is at times insufficient. Um, and I think we all agree that moving back into school during a pandemic, um, we are not at all adequately staffed to move forward. So one of the pieces that we'll be um, recommending is the hiring of an LPN to assist both the middle and the high school nurse. Um, for teachers, and that, and that would be approximately $47,000. Um, for teachers, we anticipate that there are going to be a lot of need for teachers to cover, to get teachers to cover for other teachers who may not be in the building. For teachers to um, be doing extra duties during their prep time. Um, and there's a cost to that. And you know, we're anticipating that that cost could be as much as $250,000. Bringing all of our high school students and all of our middle school students back into the building um, and asking them to wear masks, asking them not to congregate in the bathroom, asking them um, not to do some of the foolish things that high school and middle school kids might be inclined to do requires additional supervision. So we are suggesting that we would need an additional six monitors um, for each of the, you know, between the two schools. We'll have, you know, one of the things that high school, both high school and middle school are going to have to contend with is the fact that if you've ever been in the schools in the morning, our students tend to congregate in the atrium. And it's really a lovely thing. We have a lot of our students in the atrium and the, in the cafeteria. It's a real socialization period. Um, you know, it's a really, it's, it's, it's a great time of the day and the same thing happens at the end of day. Unfortunately, we can't allow that to happen. We're going to have to keep people distant. So each school has identified certain parts of the building where each of the classes can go. So for example, the seniors might go to the gym and the juniors may go to the auditorium. Um, we anticipate that we would need some additional hours, not additional people necessarily, but some additional hours added to existing paraprofessionals to help supervise some of those areas. Um, in terms of subs, we're already short subs and short subs, and we have put another add-out for subs. I anticipate, you know, I mentioned earlier that we surveyed the staff and we thought almost 40% may fall into a high-risk category. Right now, at this moment, we have about 20 staff members who have indicated to us that they, in fact, do have a high-risk situation and may not be able to re-enter the building for very legitimate reasons. We could either say, okay, you go out on FMLA and you take whatever benefits you have there, and then we have to hire another teacher to come in and fill in for them. That's crazy. I mean, that's, you have a teacher who probably still wants to teach, even though they can't be in the building, and you'd be spending a lot of money for a teacher that you may or may not be able to find. So, you know, we're anticipating that we will have some of our teachers who may not be able to enter the building continuing to teach from home, they'll be connecting with their kids, even though their kids are in the classroom and they're outside of the building, but we will need bodies, subs, people to cover, to monitor those students. Right now, each of the building has two permanent subs, one at the middle school, one at the high school, it would be very helpful to have two additional. I mentioned Screencastify, which would allow teachers to share their screens more readily with students. Also, we're currently using Google Meet, Zoom has many more features, and so that would be, that would also be a welcome addition to foster the teaching that student, that teachers will be doing with so many people, teacher, students distant. That comes to a whopping $720,000. Now, as I mentioned, Eva was able to identify some existing money to make some of these things happen. So, for example, we've identified some possible grant funding, which would allow us to fund and hire the LPN without any hit to our operational budget or any additional money put into the budget. That doesn't fund any of the other items. In a perfect world, the state will come back to us, and some of those might get funded. And again, I think it's a bit too early to start really even thinking about hiring all these positions, because we don't know for certain what we'll be coming back to. The state really is not doing us a favor by waiting, if in fact, they wait to the last moment. We're hoping that they're going to let us know sooner than later. The next group of items are things that will need to be purchased, and quite frankly, some of these are non-negotiables. We really can't think about starting school without them. $100 of duct tape might sound a little ridiculous, but rather than spending thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars on signage and, you know, arrows and that sort of thing, we're going to basically make our own. We can do just as an effective job, we'll print out things and laminate them, and so we'll make sure that we have enough signage throughout the building, but that is one way of hopefully saving some money. The partition is there to partition off the isolation rooms. I mentioned that those are going to be in the dressing rooms by the auditor, in the back of the auditorium. The partition would allow us to make sure that we're separating those fully from the classrooms in that hallway. Face shields, it's not practical to go with Plexiglas shields whenever we need to separate folks. Face shields are an acceptable option there, so we're looking to purchase 4,000 face shields. Alcohol wipes, these would be used for students to wipe down their desks, and then the student who comes after them to wipe down their desks. Disinfecting wipes would not be used by students, that would be, those would be used by custodians. Lysol spray for individual staff bathrooms, so those can be disinfected after an adult uses them. Gallons of hand sanitizer, those would be distributed into each classroom. Nitro gloves are going to be necessary in some cases. We will have students that are working with equipment, that are working with supplies, we will be cleaning that equipment and supplies, but we also want to make sure that they have gloves available to, to further keep them safe. Disposable masks, we're expecting that each teacher, staff member, and student brings their own mask, but in the event that they don't, they forget them, they don't have one, one rips, we want to make sure that we have enough masks on hand, and then they would also obviously be used by the custodial staff. That comes out to $26,000, $26,600. Eva's been able to identify items in our operating budget, because we're in July and we're early enough in the year, we've been able to identify areas where we anticipate saving. So, there again, we're not necessarily cutting anything out, but we're taking advantage of money that's available at this point. Two of the larger items which fit more into the capital area, MERV-13 air filters. So, our air handling system basically moves air, but most, one of the most critical pieces it does is it also filters the incoming air, and it filters the air that's already within the building. The filters we use right now are perfectly suitable for normal times, but they do not, and they would not filter out the COVID particles. MERV-13 filters are recommended by the CDC, and in fact, will do that. So, I think one of the non-negotiables that we really need to move forward with is replacing our current filters with the MERV-13 air filters, that's a cost of $29,000. And then, one of the quirks in the middle school, this would never be a discussion, but it is now. So, when the middle school was renovated, the fire doors going into the stair, going into and out of the stairways are permanently closed. So, they, you know, they open, but they don't have the magnetic holders that the fire doors in the rest of the building and in the high school have. So, any of you that have been in our buildings, you know, you, those light-colored wood doors that remain open, separating areas in the hallways, usually maybe at the bottom of the staircase, those are our fire doors. They're magnetized, so they remain open for students to pass, but during a fire event, they, when a fire alarm is pulled, the magnets give way and the doors close. The challenge we have with those fire doors that remain closed is that students have to touch them, and staff members have to stuff, touch them. So, you've got doors in the building that are going to be touched hundreds and hundreds of times during the day. So, we're proposing $17,000 to eliminate any of that touching and install magnetized systems into those fire doors. And again, those are fire doors specific to the middle school. We do have, after the capital projects have been completed, we do have some surplus in the capital non-recurring count. One of the benefits to using this money is that it is 75% refundable via FEMA, so it would be as much of borrowing and then replacing a good portion of that money back into the capital account. Moving further, you know, in the high school, we have a lot of double desks, which were mandated to serve handicapped students. Unfortunately, a double desk keeps students kind of shoulder to shoulder, and so we would anticipate we would need additional student desks to ensure adequate physical distancing. We have identified some areas where Plexiglas barriers would be helpful. We have some trifold, we have some desk shields, we have Plexiglas barriers that can be placed between lab stations and art stations and keyboard stations and computer labs. Outdoor handwashing stations, this is something you typically see at fairs. As I mentioned, we are very gracious, the lines are very gracious, they're lending us significant number of picnic tables and benches. We're going to set up areas outside of both of the buildings for classes to come out, and one of the requirements for the plan to return is frequent handwashing. These outside handwashing stations would facilitate that. I mentioned earlier that we have replaced a number of our water fountains with touchless bottle fillers. We still have nine water fountains that are the old-fashioned type of water fountains. If we were able to, we'd love to upgrade those. Some additional folding tables to facilitate social distancing and our physical distancing, and some temporary custodians in, we will probably need more than we would normally in the event of illness with our own custodial staff. Whereas in the past, we might have doubled up, and we might have been able to leave some rooms that don't get swept, or, you know, some areas that don't get touched. We certainly don't have that luxury at this point. So, in looking at those numbers, you know, we're looking at 233,000 that we're not, we don't have suggested funding for. So, we're suggesting taking the, the filter, the filters, the updated, upgraded filters and the magnets out of surplus, but right now, we have not identified funding for the other items I just reviewed. And then, we have a number of items that will be required to distribute food in different ways. There is some USDA grants available, and we have some operating equipment funds that we can use for that. So, this would facilitate a different approach to ensuring that we're getting food to all of our students. We'd like to see some additional money and technology to, you know, if we, if we, now that middle school students are taking their Chromebooks home, there's greater use for Chromebooks, we're seeing, we are seeing more breakage, and so that would help facilitate that. And Family ID is a system that allows parents to go in and register their students. It's a paperless, for medical emergency contact paperwork, this would allow us to enhance the system that we already do have. Unfortunately, that's another $23,000. And the last thing we have there is additional police coverage. We anticipate that we're going to need additional, three additional police officers in the morning and in the afternoon to manage traffic with increased traffic and with new traffic patterns. I don't anticipate that that's going to be a long-term need, but at least for the first month or so, we anticipate that that will be a need. We can pull that out of the operating budget, that's about $5,000. So, I'm presenting you with all of the items we think we need. I can give some solutions for where we think we can provide that funding from our existing operating, our grants and our capital surplus. We're waiting for the state to provide us with, you know, more specific information about what, if any, funding we may see from them. And then, you know, Eva and I will continue to review the budget to see additional savings. So, you know, we may find out that, you know, as we eliminate certain programs, like field trips, for example, or other activities, that there's additional savings that we can purchase some of these other items from. So, the total of what we would, we would like to spend right now is $147, $369, $47,000 of that from a grant to fund the LPN, $26,000 from operating budgets, and we'd be taking that from professional development, from some general supplies and custodial supplies. The capital, the non-recurring surplus, the HVAC, there are savings in the HVAC program. If we spent the $46,000, that would leave $4,800 in capital non-recurring account, and again, we would likely get 75% of that $46,000 returned to us through FEMA reimbursement. We have some transportation, so for example, we're likely not doing the orientation for seventh and ninth graders, so therefore, that would give us a $4,000 savings there. For police services, we know that we won't have some activities that we would normally have, that'll provide us with a savings there. And the USDA grant gives us, we know that we have some extra money there. Eva, do you want to, I don't know if you have anything you want to chime in on, or anything I missed?
No, I think you did a good job of trying to explain it all. I know it's a lot to absorb, so I guess it's more so for questions that folks might have right now.
I have one. Eva, thank you very much for putting all this together. You did a really nice job, it's very clear. If we got the 75% back from FEMA, would there be a procedural problem with putting it back into the capital non-refunding, refunded account?
No, so technically, when I get a reimbursement back, I'm able to credit the same account it came out of. So, basically, we're asking to repay the district for the funds that we were borrowing from them at that time.
Thanks. Does anyone else have any questions? I think I do, as far as allocating money for this, are we, are we in need of voting on any of this tonight, or are we holding off to see what happens?
I think, Stephanie, I think the challenge that we're all facing is that, I think, and Eva, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but I think the only thing that may require a vote would be use of the capital non-recurring.
Correct.
Because the operating budget, we're doing transfers, and we can review that with the board. The challenge we have is, so for the filters that we need to purchase, there's a lag time in, in get, anything we buy right now related to COVID, it's on backwater, or it's not available, or, you know, even, you know, talking to some other districts, some of the things that they're determining they need to buy now, they're not going to be getting them until September, October. I think the filters are something that we would need to move on quickly, and I think the magnetized doors, again, only because those are, you know, those are something so fundamental. If I could prop open those fire doors, I would say, let's save $17,000 and prop open the fire doors, but we can't do that. You can't prop open a fire door. So, you know, those present us with unique challenges that I think if we wait, I think we're going to be finding that we're starting school without some of those things in place that we really need to move forward with. If I could also just add in, just for information's sake, you know, I mentioned that we're proposing a change to the calendar. So, that will, that will require a vote eventually, because the board approves the calendar. I'm not suggesting we do that tonight. We may find out in two weeks that we're coming back to a, you know, maybe we're coming back to distance learning or something else. So, I would hate to, you know, as long as you understand what direction we're moving in, and that it's consistent with the other three, with the three elementary districts, I'm hopeful that if in August, we need to formally adopt a different calendar, we can do that at that point, because you already know what it's going to look like. I think it's premature to do that now, because again, we might find ourselves coming back to school with a different model, that different calendar doesn't really help out much. So, you know, I could see a situation where I might say, it's not worth changing the calendar, let's keep it where it is, because, you know, we're not coming back to a full return.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Can I ask you a question about the filters?
Yes.
How do you know when it's time to change them? Is it something that's just done by a date, or do they have like a gauge on them when they let you know they're getting, you know, past their peak performance? And the reason I'm asking the question is, if we allocated the money now and got the filters, we would still be able to use them. It wouldn't be, you know, something that we couldn't, we couldn't use, you know, we would still be able to use the filters.
Hold on one sec, I'm getting a text from Mike Schleicher. So, so every, every, okay, Mike Schleicher. okay, Mike Schleyoff, I need a little more information.
So if I could jump in for a second, so we, through the budget, we have a preventative maintenance contract. Control air comes in and replaces our filters four times a year. So the price that we're looking for the filters is actually the differential cost, the net cost between what we've already budgeted to get the more expensive recommended filters for this COVID situation. So this is really just the net difference. So yes, we would use, once we purchase them, those were the filters we're going to use, and they get replaced four times a year.
So they would get replaced four times a year, no matter what their usage was, if there were students in the school or not?
Correct.
Right, so that that would buy us a year of enhanced filters.
Scott, I just have a question, and maybe for Eva too, on the on the Witsens, you know, with the reduced you know, with reduced numbers in the school system, both students and teachers, and also some kind of alternative lunch delivery. Do we anticipate them, any savings versus the regular full out school buffet lunch that they're usually doing?
So no, I I don't think that's going to be any savings, because unfortunately, it's going to cost us more man hours, I believe. But we're still investigating all of that. I know Witsens has released an email this morning that actually says they're coming up with prepackaged types of items, so that might help us with man hours, but but I'm not sure at this point.
Yeah, Vinnie, that that's a really great question. You know, one of the, so right now, obviously, you know, all of the Witsen's work takes place in the server, serveri, and the, you know, serving or the the cashiers. You know, we're envisioning that we're going to have kiosks outside, we're going to have kiosks in the concession stand, we're going to have them at the end of hallways. Because, you know, the schedule presents, again, some challenges for us in that we're looking to feed fourteen hundred students if they all are in the building at the same time, you know, and and so we're really asking them to increase dramatically the number of distribution points. We are looking to possibly look at any apps that might help with that. So a student may be able to purchase lunch, you know, via app, and so it reduces the need for transactions at wherever the lunch gets picked up. So we're hopeful that we can streamline some things there.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay, um, is that everything, Scott? That was a lot. And Eva?
That's that's enough for me right now.
That's it? Okay.
The the only thing, again, I I would caution you is that this is all subject to change, and it will change. You know, I I wouldn't, don't be surprised if, you know, we may need a special meeting here or there to address something that comes up that we just, you know, we're not anticipating today, but I I learned of something new that's required of us tomorrow.
So that still poses the question, as far as releasing the the money for, from capital non-refunding, refund funds for the filters and the the magnetic door latches. So you said that there would be a four thou, approximately four thousand dollars left in that account after you paid for for those two items?
Right.
Yeah.
And a possibility of getting seventy five percent back from FEMA. Correct. And you do feel an urgency that that this needs to be moved on tonight?
I I do, only because, again, we need to make those arrangements so they're in place for the first day of school. I I guess I I want to make sure that, you know, I think some of the items, obviously, a lot of the items I'm presenting to you, we're not voting on. I'm not suggesting, let's let's spend a million dollars. But I, but I think there's, you know, an expectation amongst our staff and our families that, you know, at least some of those big pieces are going to be there. And I don't think I can guarantee that those big pieces would be there if we didn't move quickly. I think the filters in themselves, I know Mike has told us, there's a, not a lag time, but it's
All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'll make a motion to allow the superintendent to purchase the filters and the metal electronic lock for the fire doors through the capital non-recurring fund.
Sorry, I was going to second that. As long, is that everything you need, Scott? That's, I'm just not a hundred percent clear. I think that's the stuff that needed to be ordered.
Exactly. Right now, and and again, I think the 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 other things that we're, that Eva and I are kind of identifying, like where we really need to get these now, we can get through operating. So, you know, we can share those with you guys as transfers, as we don't need, you don't need to take a vote on any of that stuff tonight.
If if that gets you there, I I second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? No? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Sue? Hey, Kathleen?
Yes?
Jessica?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Did Judy rejoin? Okay, no, um, she did not rejoin. Vin?
Yes.
And Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you to the whole reentry committee for all of your hard work. I know just by looking at the number of people on the committee and what you had to accomplish, a great amount of work was done. So thank you all for that. And and I'm sure there'll be many changes to come, but but we we do appreciate your dedication to this. It's it's a, it's a tremendous undertaking.
Thank you. And Stephanie, just, I also want to do a shout out to the, I I know that there's some parents on on board tonight, and some of those have been really helpful for us in getting the word out and providing us with follow up questions, so that we've been able to clarify some things. So I appreciate the diligence that our parents are taking as well as being a part of this. And also, I think I'd be I neglect if I didn't give a shout out as well to Heven and Over Marvel. The administrative teams have been wonderful. It's been a great team to work with. We're all, you know, involved in a Herculean task, and they've all been very, very helpful in helping us get there, so.
Great. Thank you.
Just one question, Stephanie.
Sure.
Just, Scott, so what is the, what is the process now? It goes to the governor's office this week, and then does it come back to you guys as a committee after that? Who gets the final say?
Okay, I wish I, I wish I had a better answer, Vinnie, for this. We are being directed to share our plans, but that we're also being told that no action will be taking, taken on the state level. So we need to submit our plans, but we won't be receiving any feedback or further guidance once they're been submitted. I think, as I mentioned earlier, it's been, you know, some, some districts were were kind of touting the fact that they were going to move into it, you know, with a hybrid plan. They're going to start with a hybrid plan. And the commissioner today kind of sent out a a warning and a finger lashing that that's not going to fly. You you need to make sure that you have all three plans. So we may, they may review the plans just to ensure that the full time reentry plan is there, and it's it's part of the the process. So having, having, again, having said that, we'll submit the plan this week, but that doesn't mean that it's it's in final form. We will continue working on it. So the state will have essentially a draft form of it, and as we update it, you'll be sure, you know, we'll share it with everybody, but it will still be a work in progress to some degree. Thanks.
Anyone else before we move on to public comments? Okay, moving on to public comments. You may either write in a chat for me to call on you or speak up if you're on the phone. And I'm not seeing any public comments at this time. So we are going to close this meeting and go into executive session. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session. Vin?
Is there a second?
Second, Rob.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. The, I just want to remind everybody that that there is a second executive session login sent, so please go to the latest executive session login. And Scott, what I'll do is, well, you have to start us off, and then then I'll text you when we're done. So, okay? Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight.